Everyone, I would like to call to order the October 13, 2020 Regular Meeting of the Common Council to Order. Carrie, would you please call the row?
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Ms. Herbstrick.
Here.
Mr. Hill.
Here.
Ms. McKeonan.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Beach.
Here.
Mr. Wiley.
Here.
Mr. Willingham.
Here.
And Mayor Smith.
Here. We will now observe a moment of silence and be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Vice Mayor Hill.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have before us the minutes of the September 22, 2020 Regular and Work Session Minutes. Unless there are edits, changes, or deletions, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Counselor McKeonan and a second by Counselor Hill. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. The next item is a report of the mayor. I have no report this evening, so we'll move on to a report of the city manager.
Mayor and councilors, thank you very much. It's great to be here. I'm going to roll through a few things tonight, but I want to start off by saying thank you for this opportunity. It's an honor to be of service to you and the residents of Winchester. I will typically try to keep my remarks brief, but I do have a few things I'd like to make you and the residents apprised of. I have been spending a lot of time with staff, and one particular shout-out I want to start off with is, we had an incident over the weekend that the police responded to involving a resident, and I want to use this as an opportunity really to give them some praise because they really -- take this down. They really -- the Winchester Police really performed admirably and, I would say, helped our city avoid some tragedy. Officers were dispatched to a scene after a cellphone app had alerted dispatch because an individual was asking police to respond because he wanted them to shoot him. As the officers arrived on the scene, they found the man outside a housing complex with a pistol in his hand. The location was near many single-family home and multifamily dwellings. The officer safely took positions of cover while the individual yelled at the officers. A Winchester Police Sergeant from a safe location engaged the male in conversation and quickly convinced him to drop the weapon. He continued to calmly talk, the sergeant did, and show concern for the individual while giving him orders to be taken safely into custody. I wanted to bring this up because it really demonstrates the ability for our officers to balance, to use their crisis intervention training skills and use of force in a very complex situation like this. And these decisions are the kind that have to be made in a matter of seconds. And this incident really demonstrated the effectiveness of their de-escalation training, their CIT training, and their use of force. So I wanted to take a moment to recognize them for the outstanding work this weekend in which they really helped the community avoid a tragic incident. On the fire side, it's been a little over a month now since we've increased staffing on the engines and the ladder truck from one to two-person now. So far, so good. And we've been able to address this through overtime, through voluntary overtime. We have not had to do any mandatory holdovers or draft anyone for overtime yet. We do have that ability if we need to, but thus far, we have not had to. On parks, there is dedication to Ruth Jackson Memorial Park located at the intersection of South Kent and East Cecil. I will still probably need navigation to find my way there, but that's going to be conducted Thursday, October 15 at 11:00. It's, for those of you who don't know, it's a small neighborhood pocket park named in honor of Ruth Jackson and her family who once operated Ruth's Tea Room there on the site from 1925 to 2005, and you all are welcome to attend. Facilities, we are installing, you might notice we're installing some new UV lighting in several buildings, Timbrook Social Services and Judicial. We have installed that type of lighting in other places to prevent the spread of COVID-19, and we've been able to do that with CARES Act money. Public services, you might notice we resumed work on the Wentworth Drive Improvement Project. That construction had been suspended in the spring due to COVID-19. We've gotten several emails and questions about Oxford Houses, and I just wanted you all to know that the staff is working with the owner at a particular home over on Jefferson Street to remedy the issue, and that owner has been working with us. State Code provides an avenue of licensure that would allow the house to exceed some zoning regulations of a maximum of up to eight individuals, and zoning is working to ensure that the house comes into compliance through reduced occupancy or acquiring an official license to run the group home. IT side, we had some internet outages over the weekend, which is part of the reason why we are currently in the process of engineering a redundant internet pipe with additional ISP to supplement our existing coverage. This 24 -- ensuring 24/7 coverage is important in situations mainly because of our increased reliance in the cloud for many of our enterprise products. I'd like to take a moment and acknowledge our own Mary Blow, who I have named our new deputy city manager. We did not have to create a new position, and for the time being, her job responsibilities remain the same. However, I felt it important not only to have a strong right-hand, but really to acknowledge the critical role she plays in the team and her service to the city thus far. So if you get a chance, please congratulate Mary. We have, I don't have more details on this, I just got it as I was walking in, but we have funded 50 CARES Act grant applications. And finally, we've been getting a lot of questions about Halloween. So there are many residents who have been asking if trick-or-treating will occur in Winchester. I think it's important to note, standing residents you might get questions from, that the city does not regulate Halloween. We don't cancel Halloween, and we don't have any intent to do that. It's up to the individual and neighborhoods and families to decide, but the CDC does, has issued holiday-specific guidelines in a conversation with the Health District. We wanted just to convey the, really what the summary of that guidance is. And first off, COVID is a disease of proximity, so your two enemies are closeness and contact, which of course is awful for trick-or-treating because you have both of those elements, large number of kids walking from door-to-door, interacting with strangers. So if you have any types of concerns about the safety of your family, you might want to think twice or take extra precautions. There are still many other things to do. Dressing up is not a problem. Carving pumpkins, there's plenty of other activities, small-scale trick-or-treating setups with just a few stops with known people, safely pre-packaging treats, and of course parental supervision to make sure these rules are kept in place. And of course, trick-or-treating, you know, it's a holiday, it's an activity really geared towards younger children, so we would encourage older teens to maybe opt out this year, find a different activity rather than going door-to-door. You know, we've seen recent problems with disease spread in other places with that particular age range, so we would encourage folks to find something other than trick-or-treating to do, but if they feel, if they still make that individual choice to go trick-or-treating, we encourage them to check out the CDC guidelines. And that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Moving on, we'll have the report of the city attorney, Ms. Michelson.
I have nothing at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to public hearings, our first public hearing is a second reading, RZ-20-371, that ordnance to rezone 9.65 acres of land at 654 Fox Drive, from low-density residential district to low-density residential district with planned unit development overlay district. Mr. Hummels.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. I don't have any additional items to report. There's really nothing that's changed, so I would recommend proceeding with the public hearing.
Okay. Is there anyone this evening who wishes to speak on this matter? You have three minutes. Please come to the podium. If not, Mr. Hoffman, were there any comments received online?
No, sir, there were not.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the body?
Motion to approve. Wiley?
Second. Herbstrick.
I have a motion, Counselor Wiley, and a second from Counselor Herbstrick. Carrie, would you please call the row?
Yes. Ms. Herbstrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. McKeonan.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Beach.
Yes.
Mr. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Willingham.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes, and that is forwarded. The next item I have is request of Sarah Zane Fire Hall LLC for a conditional use permit to convert ground floor of a single-family detached dwelling to multi-family use per Section 9-2-16 of the zoning ordinance at 305 North Loudoun Street. Zone central business with historic Winchester district overlay. Mr. Hummels. You might as well stay up here.
Again, no new information from last time, and would recommend proceeding with the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this matter? Mr. Hoffman, did you receive any online comments?
No, sir, I did not.
I will now close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the body?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Clark and a second from Counselor Wiley. Carrie, would you please call the row?
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Herbstrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. McKeonan.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Beach.
Yes.
Mr. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Willingham.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes, and that is forwarded. The next item is a request of RCI Properties LLC for a conditional use permit to construct a non-compliant fence per Section 18-9-4 of the zoning ordinance in the front yard of 206 West Wick Street, Zone Limited Industrial M1 District. Mr. Hummels.
And once again, no new changes to this request. Recommend proceeding with the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this matter? Mr. Hoffman, did you receive any online comments?
This is item 8.3.
No, this is...
Sarah Zane?
Oh. No, this is item CU-20-439.
For 439, yes, we do have one online comment from Dwayne Whittington, address 143 West Commercial Street, related to item CU-20439. The comment is as follows, "As a member of Commercial Street LLC, I wanted to present to city council the opinion of only property owners that own property that actually borders the fencing question. The non-conforming fence that is being requested is not out of character with the industrial area in question, and in our opinion, does nothing to affect property values in the neighborhood. In fact, almost directly on the other side of the street from us at 150 Commercial Street, there is a 30-plus-year-old chain-link fence within 15 feet of two city streets that measures seven feet tall with its barbed wire topper. I'm not sure how many people that view these two fences from Commercial Street would be able to say with certainty whether there is a difference in their heights, particularly given the setback the requested fence will have from Commercial Street. Sincerely, Dwayne Whittington, Member-Manager, Commercial Street LLC, 143 Commercial Street, Winchester, Virginia 22601."
Thank you. Is that the only comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I will now close the public hearing.
Mayor.
Yes.
I need to make a statement.
Counselor Wiley?
Thank you, Mayor. I hereby disclose the respect of the following transaction. I have a personal interest in this transaction because I have an interest in a business that is subject of the transaction or may realize a reasonably foreseeable direct or indirect benefit or detriment to the transaction. The name of the business is Howard Shockey &amp; Sons, and the annual income for the business exceeds or is reasonably anticipated to exceed $5,000. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. What is the pleasure of the body?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Clark and a second from Herbstrick. Carrie, would you please call the row?
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Herbstrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. McKeonan.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Beach.
Yes.
Mr. Wiley.
Recuse.
Mr. Willingham.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes, and that is forwarded. The next item I have is a request of Kyle Hopkins on behalf of property owner Karen Darby for a conditional use permit under Code Section 17-2-5B pertaining to renovations and access of 35% of the building value for a non-conforming structure during a one-year period. The property is located at 417 Fairmont Avenue, Zone Low Density Residential and Historic Winchester District. Mr. Hopkins, good evening.
Good evening. I have nothing new to report on this item, but I'm here to take questions if you need.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this matter? Mr. Hoffman, were there any comments online?
No, sir, there was not.
I will now close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the body?
Motion to approve. Wiley?
Second. Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Wiley and a second by Counselor Beach. Carrie, would you please call the row?
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Herbstrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. McKeonan.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Beach.
Yes.
Mr. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Willingham.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes, and that is forwarded. The next item I have is public comments. Now is the time on our agenda for public comments. Is there anyone here who wishes to address council? If so, you have three minutes. Please come to the podium, state your name and address. I have on the list, I have Mr. James Washington. Please come to the podium right here where the microphone is. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Evening, President, Vice President, Council. My name is James Washington, son of Herman Washington, Sr. I was approached about selling the house at 636 Watson Avenue for $25,000 by the person that eventually bought the house. I went to the clerk's office to check and was told that there was a bunch of liens against the property and that would not be able to sell it. A couple months later, I received a notice that the house would be sold for taxes, for property taxes. I was never told what the house was sold for until this last notice that was sent in September this year. This notice was about the motion to release the surplus funds to the city of Winchester. And that notice was the first time that I had seen or heard anything about having, within two years, to file a claim for the surplus funds. I was under impression that what was left over from the letter that it would go to the lien holders. A city attorney told me that I could go to the circuit court proceedings, also speak to the city council about this matter. I asked why we were not given more information, and he said that he was just taking over and because the other attorney left, and he was making sure that everybody knew what was going on now. The property taxes had to be less than $8,000, so it appeared everything was about $25,000 total. I was told as a child that if you take something that doesn't belong to you, that you would be put in jail, that you'd be in trouble and you'd go to jail. I would like for someone to explain to me why the city thinks the excess funds would go to them instead of the heirs of Herman Washington. I hope that the city council will give the excess funds to the heirs of Herman Washington due to the poor communication with the family. Thank you for allowing me to address the city council.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker I have is Miranda... You aren't speaking? Okay, sorry. Mr. Washington, normally we don't comment on public comments, but council will take this request under advisement, and the city manager or the city attorney will get back with you, and they do have your contact information.
Because I was instructed by the attorney to come here.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Thank you. And Miranda, you will not be speaking. Okay. Is there anyone else here who would like to... So you are going to speak?
We have...
Would you like to state your name and address, please?
My name is Miranda Skelly Delmarico. 154 Ump's Drive is my residence. We have a rental house at 152 Fox Drive. It is on an easement that is named Center Street. We have an application for the, to apply for the city to vacate part of the easement. We do not have a driveway, even though every house on that block of Fox Drive has a driveway. So we were told by the Planning Commission that the cost of the purchase of the land would be $0 to $1 per square foot. I understand that city land, once it's gone, it's gone, and city land is very important to the city. We found out that things have changed. City Council, sorry, Planning Commission did not have the correct information when they told us that it would be $0 to $1 per square foot. The cost now is $3,800 to acquire this 17-foot by 100-and-some-foot easement. My problem is that two other houses on the easement have already asphalted part of the city land that is not theirs. The $3,800 I do not believe is a fair cost. If what they, other two people have done, they are not going to be charged the same amount for that because they have encroached on city property. So the $3,800 fee is the number I was given. I believe in light of two other property owners having asphalted that areas that are theirs, that we should get a break.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to address council? If not, I will close the public comments, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Would any member like to...
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We did have one online.
I'm sorry.
Any email to read? No problem. Just for the record, too, we did also receive a written letter from Mr. Washington who spoke earlier.
Okay.
We do have his contact information. That was part of your packet. What I will read is an email provided from a resident. We received one, from Angela Brawleyer, address not provided. The email reads, "I am greatly opposed to having chickens in the city of Winchester on people's property for the main reason that owners should be aware that poultry can sometimes carry harmful germs that make people sick. These germs can cause a variety of illnesses in people ranging from minor skin infections to serious illnesses that could cause death. Salmonella and Campy Pilobacter are common public health hazards potentially associated with chicken contact. These bacteria are carried by healthy chickens and are communicable to people through direct contact, exposure to manure, or consumption of undercooked chicken and eggs. Who in the city of Winchester is going to monitor the chickens to make sure the cages and the areas are kept clean and that the guidelines are followed? If you want livestock, then there's plenty of space in the county. Most pet owners don't even clean up after their dogs in the city, and now people want livestock?" Question mark. Again, I'm greatly opposed. Regards, Angela Brawleyer."
Thank you for that. Was there any other comments?
No more.
Okay, thank you. I will close the public comments and move on to the consent agenda. Would any member like to remove an item from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Wiley and a second from Counselor McKeonan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Thank you. Moving on to the agenda. First item on the agenda is a resolution of sorrow for Richard D. Kern. Tim?
My apologies. So we did prepare a resolution of sorrow. If there's any counselor that would like to speak first or say any words about Mr. Kern's, I believe there was also going to be, one of our constitutional officers was going to come and speak, but I don't... going to come and speak, but I don't see that person in attendance, so.
Counsel Wiley, would you like to?
Yeah, sure. You know, Mr. Kern certainly was a person who was a big leader in our community, not only from a businessman standpoint, but also, you know, from a civic duty standpoint, serving on council, and certainly he spent, looks like a very long, successful, and happy life with his family and prosperous. And I just, you know, want to say that he will be missed, but certainly leaves a great trail of great experience and love for his, for the city that he lived in. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And moving on.
Make a motion to approve.
Sorry, thank you.
Second.
I have a motion from Counsel Willingham and a second from Veatch. Is that correct? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Wiley. The next item is a first reading in order to authorize the additional appropriations of funds for necessary expenditures of the city of Winchester, Virginia, for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, presented by Celeste Broadstreet. Good evening, Celeste.
Good evening, Mayor. I don't have any updates, but I'll be happy to answer any questions. Counsel may have.
Are there any questions for Celeste? Counsel Willingham.
This isn't a question, but I'm gonna, I'm not gonna do it tonight, but I'll do it at the next meeting. I'm gonna make an amendment or a motion to include another item on the appropriation to include funds and ask also staff to seek grant funding for a housing study. I think this is something that we've been talking about for a very long time, and I think without actually allocating monies to do that, I think we're just gonna continue to spin our wheels, but, excuse me, I think we need to know, you know, what the current housing stock is in our city, what the homeownership rates are, what our rental rates are, what are the units that are coming online from multifamily and also residential, and also understand what we need to do to be able to continue to provide housing, not only for citizens that live here today, but that will be moving into the area or coming back to the area, et cetera. So I think without having that information and continuing to approve projects, I think we're not doing justice to our community to understand exactly what the needs are today and into the future. So thank you.
Thank you. This is the first reading, so there's no action that is needed.
Mayor Smith.
Yes, Celeste.
Make one comment.
Can you move the microphone a little closer to you?
Sure. I will have to, I have to advertise the supplemental appropriation, so if you would like.
Do you want me to do it now?
Yes, please.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to amend the, let's see, sorry, I lost mine. To amend oh twenty-twenty forty-eight to increase the additional appropriations for up to an amount of, Dan, do you think fifty thousand dollars is gonna be suitable?
It really depends on the scope. If you want to cap the amount, just to cap the amount at an amount the council's comfortable with, that's fine. Just be aware that we might, once we receive, you know, bids or quotes back, it may exceed that, depending on the scope. Staff have been discussing this, and, you know, it's also possible that we might receive a grant, so our hope is we can target fifty thousand, but that, that's probably the bare minimum, I would say, for a study of what you described.
Got it. Then I will, I'll make a motion to amend this for an amount to not exceed seventy-five thousand dollars, and also in the same amendment, also request that staff seek grant funding and bring back any options to help offset the cost of that.
I have a motion before us.
Second.
Second. I have a second from Herbstrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Thank you, Celeste.
Thank you.
The next item is a motion to remove CU twenty-three-three-eight from the table. Is there a motion?
Second.
I have a motion from Counsel Hill and a second from Counsel Clark. Carrie, would you please call the row?
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Herbstrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. McKernan.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Veatch.
Yes.
Mr. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Willingham.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes, and that has been removed from the table. The next item is a request of Kim Craig for a conditional use permit under code section five dot one dash two dash eight to allow a neighborhood convenience establishment at twelve-hundred Valley Avenue, Zone Limited High Density Residential. Mr. Hopkins.
Good evening again. This item came before you back in early September, and I was on vacation at that time, so I wasn't able to answer the questions fully, and I've worked with Ms. Craig at the direction I received after watching the video of that meeting, and I know that part of what counsel's intent was to reduce the number of uses, so I got with Ms. Craig to reduce the number of uses from five to three and provided some conditions to those uses. Hopefully, this PowerPoint will come up. So first, I want to talk about what is allowable at that property by right. Currently, it's zoned HR1, which is a residential zoning, and in residential zoning, particularly in HR1, no, thank you. You can see here on the block that this, all the orange is HR1, and even though it is zoned residential, the, the structure really doesn't serve a residential use, it's really more for a business. I believe it used to be an old gas station, and this is just kind of the remnant kiosk. In most residential zonings, one use that is by right is a church. So part of what Ms. Craig has insinuated to me at times is that if the CUP, if she can't figure out a CUP, that she would potentially use it as a church, is something I think counsel should be aware of, that that is a use that could just occur.
Did you say church?
A church, correct. Is, is a use that could occur on that property by right without any sort of review. And so it was, the, the idea of having multiple uses at this location is something that Tim and I had met with the prior owner of that structure and said, you know, this is a very small structure, she was having a lot of trouble renting it, I was having a lot of interest for people to rent it, but it's such a small space that I think it's a lot of first-time entrepreneurs, and they don't really have the, I don't know, the belief perhaps to go through a three-month CUP process to maybe start the business that maybe doesn't make it. And so we came up with this idea to say, hey, well, let's figure out what uses counsel's comfortable with and bring them. So I hope what, what I have worked with Ms. Craig to present to you is something that you all are amenable to, but I also wanted to let you know that there is something that she might do with the property in the event that a CUP doesn't go through, that it could potentially become a church. So the, the conditions and, and uses that we've come to, first, are meeting space use. That was something that she was really dead set on having. The conditions that. You can see the conditions for that that we worked through. She mentioned that she possibly wanted to use a meeting space for weddings. My concern was on the noise, having stuff outside, not having reception. So those are the conditions that we've come up with for that, or really around, trying not to affect neighbors if you do hold a wedding there. But the meeting space idea for her also includes just simply people coming and having some sort of a meeting in that structure. The restaurant use, we have there, trash was an obvious concern, trying to make sure that there really isn't a, a nice trash enclosure, so hopefully the trash would be disposed of in a daily manner so it wouldn't sit there. She has no interest in doing any sort of grilling or have any sort of vapor cross property lines, so I got her to agree to, she, she wanted to agree to have no grill installed, no grease laden vapors crossing property lines or affecting structure nearby there. And then, again, retail, ninety percent of the inventory would be contained inside the structure. I was concerned that there is such a small structure and such a large amount of space that perhaps it might look unsightly if things were out and about across the, the property, and so we came to that agreement on that condition, and then no tobacco would be used. Or no tobacco sale would happen from that structure, retail-wise. Those were what it was near to. I, I think, hopefully, it would be rented as a business, and I, I think it's a, I get a tremendous amount of interest, people using it, wanting to use it for, for some of those uses. The one thing that was taken off this as a use was personal service establishment, and I would say that perhaps that is the one that I've gotten the most calls about, people wanting to do some sort of barber shop in there. So if there's any appetite at all from counsel to reinclude that, I, I would be fully supportive of that, but this is what we've come with as a, a cutting of uses down to this, just these three. So if you have any questions, I'm here. She is currently on vacation, but wanted to move forward today.
Thank you, Frank. Still any discussion? Counsel Wiley.
Thanks, Mayor. Mr. Hopkins, thank you. I'm still perplexed at exactly what Mrs. Craig wants to do here. It's almost like we're getting put in a position to make a decision based on all the variety of things that we're going to approve based on a CUP. I think that's where she wants us to go. Clearly, my concern is, is based, for by right, as a church, you can do church, certainly that's, that's allowable, then so be it. But in terms of all these opportunities, it, you know, in terms of the different uses, is the direction that she wants to go in order, I guess, my question is, is, does she want us to basically grant her all these different opportunities so she can figure out which way to market the property? Is that the goal?
That's not the goal. The, I should clarify this. This property has had CUPs before, and it's been a small retail jewelry store, it had actually been a personal service establishment or some sort of barber shop in the past. And so it was my concern that we would be here very shortly with another CUP, and so I was hoping that we would have a list of uses that, that counsel would be comfortable with, and that if a barber shop comes in and operates in such a small space, it's, it's a very small building, and they don't make it, that, that the next person that wants to do a bakery there could just go in and perhaps just do a bakery. That way, that someone, that we have an incentive already there, somebody can just come in instead of stopping, they call me, they say, "I'd like to do a bakery there," which I have had happen, and I say, "Well, actually, you need to go through this conditional use permit process," and then they never call back and the bakery never gets set up. My intent in having these multiple uses is really just to hopefully get something established there and be a positive neighborhood convenience establishment, something that serves that, that local area.
That's fair enough, but, you know, historically, in my time on council and Planning Commission, we have typically done CUPs based on what exactly they want to do with the property. So in this situation, we're opening up a myriad of different, I mean, we could, we could spend the whole night trying to figure this out, and I, I don't know about the rest of the council body here, but I would prefer that the applicant bring to us what the interested party wants to do with the property, whoever that may be that you're getting calls on. She needs to figure out which one she wants to go with. I mean, this property is clearly a, a very challenging property, for one, and it's so tight, it's a very, in, in my eyes, it's a nonconforming use across the board just because of how tight it is. However, she owns it, she wants to try to do something, I get it, and we, we need to help her do that. The problem is, is you have neighbors right on top of it, and, I mean, we take example, we take the retail establishment, what about alcohol sales and people milling around at night, hours of operation, traffic, parking? I see a, a whole myriad of things we gotta fix there for a retail establishment, and restaurant, I'd, to be perfectly honest, I don't know how you make that work for a restaurant. It's just, it's so tight. It's just a nonconforming use based on some of these use groups, and I'd like to help her make it work, but I'd prefer that she pick a direction she wants to go based on the use, and then we, we work with her on crafting that CUP, and I think that's the way we need to do it. Otherwise, I think we could be talking about this for the next four hours. I'll yield back, thank you.
Counsel Clark.
Frank, you mentioned personal use establishments. Is there any, can, can we envision any kind of personal use establishment that would cause a detriment to the neighborhood? You mentioned, I think, bar, barber shop. I'm trying to think of a personal use establishment which would somehow infringe on the neighborhood, and I'm not coming up with anything.
Only one that comes to mind that, that commonly, I think people, causes people some heartache, could probably be some sort of massage.
Okay. So if we strike massage parlor because of some of its nefarious connotations, you know, I, I, unlike my colleague, Mr. Wiley, feel like we need to be business friendly, and I think what we need to do here is try to give this lady some latitude so she can attract a tenant. I, I agree with some of the comments that have been made before, that this is an odd property, and it's gonna be hard to utilize, and so I think we need to try to give this lady the tools, you know, all the tools she can, she can possibly put in her toolbox to, to attract a, a tenant and get this property in the plus column for, for rentals. So I would, I would like to see us go forward with this and include personal use establishment, maybe strike massage parlor, but, you know, I understand the, the narrow tailored application of the CUP process. However, in this case, it's such an odd property that I think that if we give her a, a broad set of possibilities with some restrictions of businesses we feel like would not be appropriate, given the property and its location, that that would help the owner to attract a, a, you know, business tenant in this spot. So that's what I would like to see.
Counsel Willingham.
I think it'd be difficult to say that Mr. Wiley is not business friendly, but that's a different conversation for a different day. I will say that I agree with both my colleagues. I think that, you know, it is, it's from the beginning of this conditional use permit request, it has been difficult to say that, you know, we're gonna, and I appreciate what you try to do, because, you know, she doesn't have a tenant, and so we're trying to figure this out, and we're trying to sort of almost solve backwards, you know, in a, in a normal world, she would've said, here's what I want to do with the property before I buy it, and then come to us, right? So I get that, and, you know, I agree with Mr. Wiley from the perspective that, you know, it's, it's tough to put conditions on because, you know, she may meet, let's say we do a meeting space, then we find out there's, there's something else. But to Mr. Clark's point, I think that because it is sort of such a unique structure that if you don't give at least some direction about what you can or can't do, then we, we sort of float back into this, and, you know, the conditional use process is onerous on some people who have not gone through this, and they're trying to get their business set up, and obviously, we don't want to do that, too. So I guess I have a third-way proposal, which would be, and it's not a perfect, you know, mitigation structure or, or way to do this, but, you know, if we do move forward the CUP, I would request that we include a, at least a six-month or a year review, like we do on some, some other CUPs. I know we've done that historically in the past. And that way, if any of these items are not working, or if she's doing something, or the use of the building is not something in conformity with what I think we, we believe the spirit would be, then I think that, you know, we should address that. On the second part of that, you know, there are some conditions in here which, like for restaurant use, well, there's no grill that can be installed. Well, that's, you're almost eliminating almost all restaurants, other than, to your point, a bakery or some very defined, small use. Even from that perspective, you're not gonna be able to do that much there. So she may need to, to, to change that or reconfigure that, and so, but I think for us to be able to do our job and to, you know, do this with that, what I would consider to be setting a precedent into the future, you know, I, I think that I would be okay approving this, but only with a time review on a regular basis so that we make sure that whatever's being operated out of there is consistent with what we want to see there in the neighborhood, and what's, what's, you know, also addresses any of the concerns that the neighbors would have. Obviously, this is a heavily residential area, and there's also a high school across the street. So I think, you know, as long as we can have that review, I'd be comfortable with that. If we're not able to do that annual or six-month review, then I, I would have to not, I would not be able to support this, but I would with that caveat. Thank you.
Counsel Veatch.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing, a question, Counsel Willingham, is that reviewed by staff or by counsel?
I, I think it should come back to counsel.
Okay. Frank, on a couple of these things, they're very vague, but the first one I've got a question on is the music. This being in a residential area, that sounds like that's even tighter than the noise ordinance would be on a, a neighbor, so to speak. So why is it that they can't have music, but a neighbor can?
Yeah, well, let me think about that. I think that might be, I would defer to Melissa on this on one, on one level, and this is my guess, that a noise ordinance is, is broad scale. This person's asking for a conditional use permit, so they can be conditioned something further than perhaps would be allowed by right, just as a general citizen or a general use applied in the city. I think that would be correct. Okay. She says yes.
And some of these, I would have to get more defined, like the reception, what is that? To the point of the alcohol, I agree, that needs to be discussed or brought up. Is there gonna be any alcohol for sale on the resident, restaurant, or even on property? So I, I will support Counsel Willingham's recommendation, plus a little bit more information.
Okay. Counselor McKeown.
I also can support moving forward with this with the opportunity to review. It is a very difficult space. I've watched it be a million things from my office at Hanley. And with its size, I could almost see the need for, there could be seasonal purposes for this. And so I think coming, the thing is definitely going to be this, when it could, it could serve a purpose that, like I said, on a seasonal basis. So I can, I can see our need to be flexible in this situation.
Frank. Counselor Hurst.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, I certainly want to move forward and support, as other council members have said. I also agree that there should probably be some more detail regarding some of these specific items. Question I have is, have we ever done anything like this before for a property, set up multiple, I mean, has this ever happened before?
I'll defer to Tim on that. He says, "No, this is..."
No.
I'll take full ownership. It was my idea to come up with multiple uses. Tim and I both spoke with the prior owner, and we just run into this problem where people call, and they want to use it, and they're just not willing to go through the conditional use permit process. The last owner had a very tough time renting it out. And as I'm sure you're well aware, there's a two-year timeframe on, you know, the last one was a retail, and it was very specific to a jewelry store. So when that tenant left, you're really looking for this exact use again. And so, you know, the ideal solution would probably be some level of rezoning that would fix the uses to what that building is. However, it's in the middle of HR1. Everything around is HR1. You can't rezone it. It'd be a spot zoning. So my idea was to come up with some way of trying to open up those uses, because I just feel like it's not going to live out its days as a residential property, most likely, at least in the near term.
Yeah.
And just trying to be flexible.
Yeah. No, I mean, I think, I mean, I appreciate your creativity in trying to get it to, so it works for the business person and also for the city. And, I mean, I appreciate that. I guess, you know, I'm, I mean, does this potentially set up a precedent for future properties? I mean, is there, I don't know. I mean, I'm just trying to think out further if this could be an issue at some point.
That's a good question. I don't have any intent to revive this idea again, probably, unless another very unique situation arises. I think this is clearly kind of outside the box, and just trying to make it work and hopefully get a space rented with a business, and having some level of understanding that it's going to be difficult for whatever business inhabits it. And so that's really the flexibility that I was trying to provide.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, I agree with it being right across from Hanley, that the, you know, concern or issue regarding alcohol sales, you have no tobacco in here. And, I mean, I would certainly support moving some version forward that maybe has more detail to it and has a timeline for it to come back to council and...
Okay.
Yeah.
Frank, I'm not going to support this, because, for one, I think it sets a bad precedent. And referring back to Counselor Wiley's statement, which I totally agree, we're not in the business of trying to determine what a property owner should do with their property. They should come with, they should come to us with an idea, a business plan of what they want to do with their property, and move forward on it. This happens all the time. I've been in business for a long, long time. Businesses have come into a space, had an idea, it either worked or it failed. And then another business goes in there to change the whole concept of what that usage was for, and they go through the CUP process. If we do it for one, we're going to have to do it for others. And that's going to set a bad precedent, because it's going to put more work on staff. And then you will have people coming to you and say, "Well, this didn't work for this building. I want to change that." But I'm not quite sure what I want to do with it. These ideas here, and some of the, the conditions are very, very vague. In the neighborhood in which it's in, some of my colleagues brought up some, some issues that could occur. I think she should be the one to make the decision on what she wants in that property. If someone really wants to move in there, they will with the business plan. We shouldn't be the ones making that decision for her. Counselor Willingham.
Frank, is the, if this doesn't get approved, and I'm just making this up, but could she, could she build a home there? Could a single-family residence, is it big enough?
It would be challenging. I don't remember the exact dimensions. I measured it out before. It would be a fairly small footprint.
But from setbacks, it could be, it could be a home?
It could.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if every councillor's had a moment, had an opportunity to speak, I'd like to add a few words to it, if it suits the council and the mayor.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
If every councillor's had an opportunity to speak, I'd like to say a few words as well, please.
Was there any other discussion from council? Counselor Wiley.
Mayor, just real quick, I just want to say, and back to you, Mr. Hopkins. Mr. Hume, when we've done these CUPs, we've had, I can't remember them all from memory, I'm sorry, but typically, when we had these CUPs, there was like a list, a checklist of like six items. I don't know, six to eight items. It had trash, noise, loitering, I don't know. We had all these different requirements, right? And they were boilerplate. I think they went a lot with restaurant use and other types of uses. In this situation, granted, it's going to vary, but those are some of the things we need to kind of craft to get back to the applicant, to kind of give her some direction, would be my suggestion. And thoughts on that?
You're correct. And with the conditional uses, there's two things that you have to do with every conditional use. A, you have to find that...
Can you move the microphone closer to you or move the master?
That better?
Yes.
So there's two things that council has to do. A, you have to find that the proposed use, that is, the specific use, is consistent with the conference of plan. And secondly, you have to make a finding that the use as proposed or as modified by council with conditions would not have a detrimental impact on adjoining property owners or businesses. It's intended to be a case-by-case evaluation of a specific use. I don't think state code necessarily precludes council from granting kind of alternative A, alternative B. But yes, with other conditional uses, you have things like hours of operation. So in this case, you know, a retail store that sells jewelry five or six days a week from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. is a whole lot less impact and easier for council to find that it will not have a detrimental impact than, say, a 24-hour beverage discounter that sells, you know, craft beers or something like that. So, so yes, the Pizzico Pizza is a good example. I think you proved that one with 13 conditions, including hours of operation, how much occurs inside versus outside, mandatory review by the zoning administrator after one year, reapproval by city council after three years. That's more common, yes.
And I'll just leave it at that. I think that's where we need to be going with this, based on the applicant bringing that to us, and then we craft it accordingly with the CUP based on the type of use. I don't know what's changed here, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel. Actually, Counselor Wiley stole a little bit of what I was going to say. I actually want to thank Mr. Hopkins. This is an attempt for us to try to work with a business. You know, it is a challenging space, as you've all acknowledged. It's unlikely that a house would be built there. It's too small to really be a church. There is a retail establishment immediately next door to it. There is a carpet store about a half a block back into the neighborhood, or some type of light industrial, you know, carpet warehouse type of place. So it's not, you know, there are other uses beyond residential in the immediate area. So this was, I think, our attempt to create some flexibility, but this is the exact kind of dialogue I think we wanted to hear tonight. So I think we'll follow whatever direction the council gives us, of course. But I just wanted to acknowledge that this was really our attempt to be flexible, help this owner find an occupant. And there will be more spaces like this. Every one of these sites are unique. They'll continue to pop up. So this has been helpful conversation. Thank you.
I'll now entertain a motion if there's no other discussion.
John, you want to? Sure. I'll make a motion to, I guess, sorry. I'll make a motion to approve CU 20338 with an added condition that it come back before council in a period of six months.
Mr. William, would you be open to a friendly amendment to add personal use establishment to the conditions?
Exclusive of massage parlors.
Exclusive of massage parlor.
Yes, that's my amendment.
Do we want to put a condition on for no alcohol sales?
Yes. Well, sure.
Or no?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So it'll be CU 20338 with the conditions outlined, with a six-month review, include personal services, exclusive of massage, and no alcohol at all for any of the uses. That's my motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Willingham and a second by Counselor Clark. Carrie, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Herbstrick?
No.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. McCarronan?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Beach?
Yes.
Mr. Wiley?
No.
Mr. Willingham?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
No. So that carries. The next item is a first reading, TA-20-365, an ordinance amending Article 18-6-2 of the Winchester zoning ordinance pertaining to definitions of the off-street parking regulations. Mr. Hopkins.
Good evening. There are no changes since the last work session. I'm here for any questions that you have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hopkins? This being a first reading, there is no action needed. Moving on to the next item is also a first reading, RC-20-272, an ordinance to rezone 1.96 acres of land at 1811 Robert Street from Highway Commercial District to Highway Commercial District with planned unit development overlay and rezone a 0.04 portion of land at 1802 Robert Street from Limited Industrial District to Highway Commercial District with planned unit development overlay. Mr. Hume.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No changes to this, and so recommend forwarding it for second reading.
Discussion. Counselor Willingham.
We, Counselor McCarronan and I had asked, I think, five or six questions that I think Harry was working on, or his team was working on. But I don't believe any of those answers have been circulated. I don't know, I'm pretty sure they were working on them, or they were getting answers to those, but I don't believe that we've seen those. And then we also had a number of items that we brought up at the last meeting that I've still not seen any correspondence on as well. So it would be helpful, I think, as part of that, before we get to the next meeting, obviously, to have those questions answered. Most of it had to do with traffic flow, and then some other things that had to do with pedestrian safety and a couple of other items related to that.
Was there any other discussion?
And I'm happy to resend the email, Mr. Hoffman, if you need it.
Please do.
Since this is a first reading, there is no action needed on this as well. The next item is a motion to approve the in-house viewer's report for an ordinance to vacate and convey a 2,057 square foot portion of the Center Street right-of-way adjacent to 152 Fox Drive. Are there any questions? I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Hill and a second from Counselor Hurst. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Let me move somewhere. The next item is an ordinance to vacate and convey a 2,057 square foot portion of the Center Street right-of-way adjacent to 152 Fox Drive. Mr. Hume.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You did have a speaker earlier this evening under public comments, who was the applicant for this. And I did want to provide some clarity for council in terms of what you have done with previous requests for conveying vacated right-of-way. So this request amounts to 2,057 square feet. Celeste Broadstreet was able to put together information from our assessor, who indicated that based upon this property and the one on the other side of the right-of-way, that the per-square-foot value of those residential lots is $7.50. So what has been your practice since about 2017 is to use that, but discounting it 25%, recognizing that particularly for residential lots, that additional square footage doesn't really significantly, if at all, increase the assessed value of the property. Most of the value of residential lots is with regard to the structure on those lots, not how much, whether you have a quarter acre lot or a third acre lot, whatever. But it is relevant in terms of what neighborhood, you know, what the values are comparables in that area. So you don't have a lot of good comparables recently that are single-family residential lots that are assembling part of the right-of-way. The most recent one was the Meadow Branch Avenue right-of-way, that Dennis Stock with the Meadow Branch Avenue Apartments. In that one, you did apply the same formula. That was 1,607 square feet, and that came out to about $2,587 before the discount. And in the end, you chose to go on the lower end with that one at $647. Perhaps the best comparable to this as far as a residential lot with a house on it was the one that you approved in 19, excuse me, 2017. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Which was for 686 Woodstock Lane, Mr. Camacho Perez, who requested the city to vacate 1,807 square feet, which would have come out at $5.63 per square foot to $10,134. But after the 25% discount, or at 25% of that, would be $2,543. So council has wide discretion in terms of whether you want to follow the formula that the city assessor uses with that 25% reduction. This property, and when I refer to this property, I mean that the Center Street right-of-way will require that the city retain an easement for underground utilities as well as stormwater. So while the applicant would be able to assemble it in their property and improve the driveway on that as part of their fee simple lot, they would not be able to, for example, attach a garage, because that would not be permitted as an encumber, with a improvement over the city's easement that we would be retaining. So if you were to discount this another 25%, that would take this down to $2,892.66, down from the $3,856.88. That was the figure from the assessor. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hume. Other, Counselor Willingham.
I don't have any questions. I think, Tim, that's, I was going to ask if we could come up with another solution, given the easement. And so I think that what you've just proposed makes a lot of sense to me. So I would make a motion to approve the ordinance, but at the 50% discount to get to the 2,800, whatever number Tim just said.
That would be the 25%. That would be the 25% discount, not a 50%.
What was the 50?
25%.
Well, you took another 25% off the.
You'd be down around 1,900-some dollars.
That's 50% discount based upon applying the normal 25%, but given the fact that there's an easement on the property, I would discount another 25%. So a 50% discount off of our normal one. And that way, we're not setting a precedent inconsistently with what we've done in the past. I think if we have an easement, they're giving up their rights, they can't make improvements there.
Can't build.
There's not much they can do to the property other than use it as driveway. So that would be my proposal and motion that I would make.
You're making a motion. Okay. We still have discussion going on here. Council Beach?
Tim, typically when we vacate property like this, we offer to both sides. Was this offered to both sides or what is the situation here?
So in this case, it's a 50-foot-wide right-of-way, and the applicant is only asking for the 17-foot portion closest to their house. So there's a disproportionate amount of area. Mr. Perry Izinok was one of the viewers who went out and provided the information back that there would not be an inconvenience caused, but the observation was made that the city probably should approach other property owners in that area to see if they too would like to purchase it. The applicant made a good comment earlier today that it seems unfair that, you know, they're trying to acquire it and improve their driveway while others have effectively squatted on there and improved the driveway on public right-of-way. So it doesn't serve a public purpose other than for the utilities that are underground.
And the applicant, I assume that was the lady that spoke earlier, said that the other neighbors have asphalted or, you know, encroached on that property. Is any of it on to the 17 feet that they're asking for?
No, this is an area where just this applicant has a gravel driveway, but as she correctly pointed out, others have improved portions of that same right-of-way adjacent to their homes.
Right, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? I have a second from Council Wiley, is that correct?
That's correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Humans.
Thank you.
Kerry, that required a roll call.
I was going to say, that one requires a roll call.
Sorry.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Herbstrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. McCarronan?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Beach?
Yes.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Willingham?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes, that is forwarded. The next item we have is a resolution authorizing common council committees. Mr. Willingham?
There's nothing new from our work session that was forwarded on to this meeting, so I'm happy to answer any questions or to go through the items, but it would be, the structure would be to set up a finance committee, a public safety committee, and a boards and commissions committee. The charters and resolution committees associated with that have been included in your packet for the last couple of ones. I believe we had some additions and some changes that were improved or updated from the last conversation. So with that, I'll open up for any, I'm sorry. I would defer back to you, Mr. President, but I don't have anything else to add.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Willingham?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Council Beach and a second from Council Hill. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Willingham.
Thank you.
The next item is a resolution affirming the city of Winchester's commitment to practicing COVID-19 preventative measures. Council Wiley?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to reaffirm or affirm the importance of social distancing, I for one need this reminder. In line with discussions with Valley Health on matters, they've asked me to present this to council as basically a reminder, you know, practicing social distancing, washing hands, et cetera, according to CDC guidelines, limiting crowds, et cetera. So resolution is attached for your review. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to ask or answer.
Council Wiley? Would you like to read the resolution so that we could?
Glad to.
That would be great. I think people do need a reminder.
Resolution affirming the city of Winchester's commitment to practicing COVID-19 preventative measures, whereas since March 2020, the Northern Virginia, Northern Chendal Valley has experienced pandemic outbreak of COVID-19, and whereas over 3,000 residents have contracted COVID-19 and more than 100 have died in the Lower Fairfax District since the beginning of the pandemic, and whereas the United States Center for Disease Control and Prevention recommends that all people two years of age and older wear a mask in public setting and when around people outside of the household, and whereas the CDC also recommends limiting close face-to-face contact with others through social distancing as an important tactic to limit the spread of COVID-19, and whereas the ability to conduct commerce and educate our children allows on our commitment to limiting the prevalence and spread of COVID-19 in the community in recognition of the courage of first responders and healthcare providers who continue to accept great personal risk in the service of their duties. Therefore, be resolved as follows, the city of Winchester requires a commitment to the widespread use of fees coverings and social distancing to prevent the spread of COVID-19. Number two, the city of Winchester will enforce these principles in all city buildings and during the conduct of city business. And number three, the city of Winchester will continue to inform its residents of safe practices and strongly encourage adherence to these principles to all residents, businesses, and visitors within this jurisdiction. Resolution number R 2020/34.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm making a motion to approve that resolution.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, we got, I just had him read it.
Can he read it again?
Give me read it again.
Yeah, missed it.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second from McCarronan.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Wiley.
Thank you.
I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's a move. Wiley?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in the adjournment.
Thank you.
I would like to call to order the October 13, 2020 work session of the common council. Kerry, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Ms. Herbstrick?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Ms. McCarronan?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Beach?
Here.
Mr. Wiley?
Here.
Mr. Willingham?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here. The next item is the agenda. The first item is the ordinance to amend and re-adopt Section 27-8 of the Winchester City Code regarding refunds of erroneous paid taxes presented by Mary Blow. Good evening, Mary.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This should be a fairly quick item, more of a housekeeping one, in my opinion. This is an ordinance to amend Section 27.8 of our ordinance. This is in reference to refunds of erroneously paid taxes. It could be based on an over-assessment or an overpayment. Currently, the state code gives, allows us up to $2,500 before it has to come to city council, but as of July 1, they raised that amount to 5,000. Even though it's still a little lower than frankly I'd like to have, I appreciate the fact they've raised it, and in consultation with the commissioner and the treasurer, we feel like it would be greater administrative efficiency and be able to get the taxpayers their refunds that they're due quicker. So staff, we recommend that we go to the $5,000, the new state limit. We can leave it at $2,500, but we agree that for efficiency purposes, you know, our finance department cuts the checks, it would really help us run a little more efficiently.
Thank you, Mary. Are there any questions for Mary? Council Beach?
Mary, I just want to say congratulations on the title change.
Thank you all.
Absolutely.
Yeah, motion. Congratulations, and well deserved. You've done a hell of a job. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Now, was there any discussion?
We should talk about Mary.
To approve and forward this on.
So we have a motion from Willingham and a second from Hill. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You need a, you need a limit. We going, picking up.
Did you need anything else from us?
It's 5,000.
It's 5,000.
We'll go to the state max, correct?
Yeah. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you all.
Congratulations again. The next item is a discussion on possible use of CARES Act funds for pilot program for semi-automating solid waste collection. Perry Izinok. I almost said automatic.
It would have been okay if you said that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. Council may remember the, earlier this year, the first part of the year, we had some really good discussions about our solid waste program, and we laid out some options that we thought would be beneficial of trying to automate our collection. That would help solve a couple of big problems that we have. The first is that we, our employees often get injured, and it's a tough job, and the biggest reason that they get injured is because they are having to lift so much weight when they collect trash. So automating and helping with that process would go a long way to helping reduce injuries. The other big challenge that we often have is residents don't always know exactly how much trash they can put out, and sometimes it's difficult for us to enforce that, and it's constantly a challenge. By automating and providing every resident with a roll-off container, that would go a long way in helping with that issue. So unfortunately, COVID hit, and that completely upended the budget for this fiscal year, so we really were not able to pursue any of those options because of that. Well, recently, we learned, and really the credit goes to Celeste, that there are some other jurisdictions that are utilizing CARES Act funds to help automate solid waste collection. So we thought that this could possibly be a really good thing for us since it's something that council seemed very interested in when we talked about it earlier this year. So what we have developed is a pilot program where we would install these semi-automated tippers on the back of each of our eight existing trucks. So I provided a video link in the agenda packet, but these tip, basically, our employees would have to roll these roll-off carts to the tipper, and then the tipper actually tips it back into the truck. So along with that, we would also purchase around 1,400 of these roll-off containers for the pilot program, and we selected four different areas. Really, what we did there is we picked one area in each of the four wards, and we tried to pick areas where we will see the different kind of scenarios, wide streets, narrow streets, a lot of on-street parking, not a lot of on-street parking. So if council is so inclined to give us the go-ahead to move forward with this, I think it will really help us, if this is the way we want to go in the future, of really getting some good information and helping develop what a citywide program would consist of. So altogether, we're looking at about $200,000 in cost for this pilot program. The requirements of the CARE Act funds means that we have to spend all the money by December 31 of this year. So really, we're looking for consensus from council tonight to either move forward or not move forward, because if we do move forward, time is of the essence, and we really got to get things in motion to make this happen. But that's really what the proposal is. Hopefully, council is amenable to it. We think it will be a good thing, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Counselors. Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor. So Perry, thanks for bringing it forward. It's an interesting concept. I do remember the conversations that we had about it, parts of them. One of the things I do remember was there were various sizes of the containers.
Yes.
Is this, are we, have we, are we choosing a single size? And the reason I bring that up is because I do like the concept, but to stick that one-size container, sort of the one-size-fits-all, you know, an elderly person might have trouble wheeling that thing around.
Yes. The majority of, the majority of the containers that we would plan to buy would be the 95-gallon, the large ones, but we would also buy some 65-gallon ones for cases like this.
Okay.
So that, we would give them a choice, but I.
So, yeah, and some people just don't have that much trash.
Right.
Some do, as we know. Some have more than that.
Yes.
So that was, that was always kind of the crux of, you know, what we were trying to solve. So, and I thought the. So, and I thought there was even some smaller ones in that. Wasn't there like some 40s or some 20s?
You can get 35-gallon, and we could get a few of those.
Okay, I would just, whatever the body decides, I would just be prepared for that, hey, it's too big, I can't move it, you know, that kind of stuff.
Right.
So I think as long as we're prepared for that, you know, it's doable. What are you going to judge success by?
Corey.
Quicker, less?
Can you move your microphone?
Yeah, what, your success is going to be determined by it's quicker, there's less injuries? I mean, what are some of the metrics you're going to use to?
Well, I think that's certainly a big part of it, you know, how it is for our employees to pick up this way and how much of an improvement that is. But a lot of it's going to be resident feedback, you know, what they think of it. I think that's a big part of it as well.
Okay. Just one more comment before I yield back. And I like the idea. I'll be honest, I'm not, I'm interested to hear what my colleagues think about using the COVID money for it, given that we're only halfway through this pandemic, is what everybody's saying, and we don't know what future expenses might be. So concept, conceptually, I like it. Financially, I don't know. I'm just curious to hear what others think. So, thank you.
Counselor Willingham.
Thanks. I do support this as well, Perry. I think, you know, we had discussed this a couple of months ago. I think, obviously, it was for making sure that we keep our employees safe and make this a more efficient process. And obviously, now, you know, we don't fully know all the impacts of COVID, and how long things live on different types of materials. And so I think from a protection perspective, the less interaction that our staff has with trash and things that are around people's, you know, mouths, et cetera, I think that, you know, to me, is a big deal. So my only, my two questions for you were going to be, I know you talk about solid waste. Were you just going to try this with just solid waste, or were you going to think about including recycling as part of this as well?
I think initially, it will just be for solid waste.
Okay, so if this works, then we could apply it, okay.
Correct.
And then I think to Mr. Sullivan's question about sort of funds, I know that Mary had been providing us sort of a tracking of what those look like. But I think because we have to spend this by the end of the year, unless there's something catastrophic, and a lot of times we can't even apply half the things that we have anyway with the CARES funding, I think that we're okay. So obviously, I'm assuming that you did speak to Mary, and we have plenty of coverage in the budget.
That's my understanding, but that's the reason there behind me to answer questions like this.
That's a thumbs up, I believe. Is that correct, Mary? Okay.
Counselor Veatch.
Thank you, Mayor. Perry, I appreciate you bringing this to us and looking for any way that we can utilize other funds to get these going. On this, I only see a map, and I see a picture of the container. Are you going to bring more information if this goes forward?
I can bring whatever information you all would like to see.
Well, I'd like to see what, what, how are you going to know if it's successful or not?
Well, I could, I could certainly write up a narrative of what we're going to be looking for and provide that to you all. I think that might be helpful.
Yeah, if you don't mind. And I'm okay with, I like how you're picking four different sites in the city with different conditions, like you said, tight roads or wide roads or whatever. I don't like the one in Ward 1, because if I'm reading this map right, it's including the old hospital. Now, I don't mind it including the residence, but the old hospital hopefully will be going under construction soon. I don't want to be picking up a construction debris.
We would not pick, we don't pick that up, and we would not pick that up from that.
So if a subcontractor walks along one of these on the street and throws in construction debris, we're not going to pick it up?
Well, I, you know, if a resident has a container.
Yeah.
And a contractor throws a board in it, we're not, we're not going to know that. But I, generally, that, I don't anticipate that being, because the contractor has to have a construction dumpster for their debris onsite.
Right.
And so, you know, if it's, if we're made aware of it, we would, we would stop that.
All right. And last, if I may, down the road, we'll have to have more details. You know, if you're giving citizens a dumpster or a container, and I'd say it's stolen, and they need another one, are we just going to freely give them out, or you'll have to have that down the road?
We, that will, that will be part of the written pro, written program. Yes, sir.
Counselor McKeonan.
Thank you, Celeste, for finding this. We appreciate your innovation there. Is the primary expense the tip bar and its placement on the truck, or is it more the containers?
The tipping bars are about $130,000 out of the $200,000. So the containers are about $70,000. So it's mostly the tipping, tipping bars.
The tipping.
Yes.
So if we were, I know you're all doing the budget to make certain we spend all the money. But if there's any opportunity to add another street or so on each side to broaden this in order to provide more, more ways to quantify the outcome and to benefit more employees and benefit the staff more, I would encourage that as well, as long as we're, you know, being very responsible with the CARES Act.
Sure.
Counselor Clark.
Perry, this is a great idea. I think we should probably go through with it. I had some questions. The memo, it says we're going to fit the tipping bars on eight trucks.
Yes.
And that's for the pilot program, or that's if we implement it citywide?
Well, we want to take this opportunity to put them on all the trucks, just because, you know, we don't always know exactly what truck we're going to be driving that day. Trucks break down, we have to use the spare. So, and looking ahead, if we, if we think that this is something that we're moving towards citywide, we would see this as a good thing to do on all the trucks.
I guess my next question is, you're talking about buying containers, and then do you sell those to each citizen?
No, that we, these would be given.
Provided, okay.
There would be no cost to the resident for the pilot program whatsoever.
Next question is, some trash containers that people buy privately have the bar already on them that the tippers use to grab onto and use. Can they, can people use those trashcans, or do they have to have the city-supplied trashcan?
We would need to look at that on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Hill.
Thank you. Thank you, Perry. And I certainly would support a project like this. I think you did a great job. For those of you that didn't know, that Perry came before one of the community meetings and presented it to citizens. And I think they were all very receptive to having something like this developed here in the city. My real question is, the number, and maybe you've already answered this, there would be different-sized containers, right?
That's correct.
And does this mean that more trash will be picked up, or would there still be a limited number of bags?
They would be limited to what will fit in the container.
Whatever fits.
Yeah.
So just whatever fits, all right.
Yes.
And even though you've identified four, well, you have four sites, one in each ward, would this change, or would this just remain within this particular site for this, during this pilot period?
We anticipated that these would be the areas, but, you know, these aren't magical areas. So if council wants to tweak these areas some, and, you know, we're certainly open to that.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Herbstrick.
Thanks, Perry. So I know this would be a great help from the physical standpoint of the employees and injuries. But does it in any way impact the number of employees that would be needed? Would it still be the same number of employees that would be out on the trucks?
For now, yes. Now, if we were to implement this citywide, and we were to go a step further and actually buy trucks that have the arms on the side that can actually reach out and grab the container, I think that would be a way, in the future, we could look at reducing the number of employees, because it would truly be automated. But there's, there's just, there's some areas in the city that we're not going to be able to do that. You know, real narrow streets where there's a lot of on-street parking, say Highland Avenue, we're not going to be able to use an automated truck to pick that up.
Yeah.
So it, potentially in the future, I think we can definitely look at that.
And these, these containers could be used if we, at some point, upgraded to that next version? You could still use these same containers?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
If there are no, for Counselor Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. So Perry, what, what are you going to do if somebody just doesn't use it? And you roll by their house, and they don't have this new trashcan that you gave them? If they just say, I just bought one last week, I went to Lowe's, it was $150, whatever they cost, and they just set yours aside, I mean, you're going to have to take the trash.
We will work with all the residents in these areas to try to get them to voluntarily participate. That's our goal.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, I just.
We're not just going to show up the first day and not pick up their trash. We're going to work with them and.
Got it.
Yeah.
We're going to take you out of the grid.
It's not me. I just know, I've gotten some correspondence about this kind of thing, and it's nobody's fault. But it, you know, some people don't like to play by the rules, so.
If there's.
I think, Dan?
Yes.
And Dan's been trying.
Yeah, if I don't want to, I want to make sure it was at a chance to speak before I speak. So Mayor, if I may.
Yeah.
It's come up a couple of times, the issue of performance. So in my previous jurisdiction, we actually had this system. We, and many private haulers have already invested in this. So you ask about performance, it's going to be benefits in terms of injuries and risk, efficiency. They made that investment because it made sense. We would not be the first jurisdiction to do this. People are doing it because it makes good financial sense in the long run if you make this investment. So I'm pleased to hear that there is support among the council. There was a question about personal cans, if somebody had one with a bar. We would probably not do that just for liability reasons. It would need to be our cans. Most of these cans are designed to a specific specification. The plastic is of a particular density. Not to say we might not try, but some of those cans you get at Lowe's or Home Depot, they're a little more flimsy, and they might not stand up to the tipping action. So we would talk to the residents before we did that. There was a question about non-participants. Like Perry said, this is semi-automated, so there's still a person there. So if someone really doesn't want to, yeah, it's, there's a public engagement and education. And that really speaks to my last point. This gets us into standard cans, which, as this system evolves, and as we see the benefits of this pilot, it really, that standardization of the receptacle really opens us up to a lot of very interesting possibilities. If someone wants to throw away more trash, and they want a bigger standard size, you know, we have the ability to do that. If they want a less, because let's say they're an elderly person living at home, and they want a smaller can. It gives us the ability to be a little more creative moving forward. So, but that's all education, engagement. Some folks aren't going to want to, but there could be a point. If we have this citywide, and we are issuing cans to every resident, at some point, we may need to say, this is the standard can. And if you want us to pick up your trash, you need to fit it within the standard can. But we're a ways off from this. You can see the zones are pretty small, and we're just thrilled to be able to get started down this path.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll now entertain, I know this is a discussion, but we need to give them some direction.
I'd like to make a motion to move ahead.
We have a motion from Counselor McKeonan and a second from Counselor Herbstrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you, Perry.
Thank you all, very much.
You have a good evening.
You too.
The next item is the executive session. I'll entertain a motion to recess into a closed meeting in order to discuss the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and the discussion of the terms or scope of such contract for discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the city as authorized by the Section 2.2-3711A29 of the Court of Virginia. The subject matter of the meeting is health insurance. Is there a motion?
So move, Wiley.
There's a second.
Second, Hill.
We have a motion and a second from Counselor Wiley and Counselor Hill. Carrie, would you please call the row?
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Herbstrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. McKeonan.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Veatch.
Yes.
Mr. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Willingham.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes, we are now in executive session. Yes, we are now in executive session.